Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of January 23. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this all the liberty of justice.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, would you please take off?
Certainly. Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Newsom is absent. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
Of Quorum of the Planning Commission. We also have Township Planning Director Dave Campbell.
All right. Next up, item four, approval of the meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for January 23.
Support.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes name, motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of the meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the Planning Commission meeting, January 9, 2014.
Support that.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hopkins, second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes name, motion carries. No public here, so we'll move on to item seven, a public hearing. Might as well get right into this and open the public hearing at 7:03 PM. For the applicant Heartland Township, zoning amendment, application number 356 with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment 76-4A through I, addressing the following issues. 76-4A, amending lot and setback definitions. 76-4B, resolving inconsistencies in frontage through and corner lots, general yard and bulk regulations. Item 76-4C, adding commercial driveway definitions. 76-4D, reviewing consistency of use standards with the Right to Farm Act. 76-4E, eliminate the duplication of off-street parking requirements and non-conforming use provisions. 76-4F, determine adequacy of pathway site standards. 76-4G, relocate variance provisions pertaining to sound. 76-4H, eliminate duplicate provisions in performance standard enforcement for extraction operations. And 76-4I, allow the Planning Commission final approval authority for principal permitted use site plans. And for the record, all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. And I think what we'll do is we'll turn this over to Dave and allow him to go through these with us. We probably aren't going to have any public comments. Then we'll close it and then we'll do our discussion. That works for you.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. So, the nine zoning ordinance amendments that you, the Planning Commission has before them tonight is the third in three rounds of amendments that the township has tackled over the last year or so. Between rounds one and two and now round three, the grand total is thirty zoning ordinance amendments that the township has worked on over the last year. This particular round, amendment 76-4A through I, came before the Planning Commission on December 19 to set a public hearing, which they did for this evening. And then at the next meeting on January 9 of 2014, the Planning Commission had an opportunity to discuss these proposed amendments in detail and gave the planning department some good feedback on some revisions that could be made. We hope that we've incorporated those revisions. There's one in particular that I'll certainly get to that I expect we'll have some good discussion on here this evening, based on some good discussion that the Township Board had at their meeting on Tuesday night. Given that the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to discuss these, I'll go through them relatively briefly, but certainly pause as necessary to elaborate or answer any questions. Let me just pull these up here as I go through them. So as I mentioned, there's nine amendments and we labeled them A through I. 76-4A has to do with amending some definitions within the zoning ordinance, particularly definitions for a corner lot, for lot line, for minimum setback required, and for street. All of these amendments are intended to, all of these changes, these definitions are intended to address the issue of, right now the zoning ordinance requires the setback requirements relative to a public road, the front setback requirement is relative to a public road or private road. But also, as it's written right now, it requires the front setback requirement met to be met relative to a easement. And as the ordinance is written now, it's not a road easement per se. So if you were to apply a strict interpretation of the ordinance, you would have to meet a front setback requirement relative to a utility easement or a conservation easement or a drainage easement, which has had, brought up some issues in the past and applicants having to go to the ZVA to get a variance for that front setback requirement. The Planning Commission has agreed that that's not what the intent was and so we want to address that. And these particular amendments and revising the definitions for those four definitions should clean that up and address that issue sufficiently. Amendment 76-4B is related to that in some ways. Particularly the definition for a through lot and a corner lot. The way it's drafted right now would allow for a through or corner lot to only meet the minimum frontage requirements on one of the two roads that it fronts upon. And the opinion of the planning staff and when going through with the ordinance review committee was that this creates a number of issues if you've got a proposed land division or a lot split or a new subdivision, whatever it may be, where the lots are only meeting the minimum frontage on one of the two roads that they front upon. That creates a number of issues with meeting setback requirements relative to both of those, both those roads when you've got a kind of a irregularly shaped lot is what that has the potential to create. And it really limits the amount of space that you have available to build on a lot that would be configured in such a way and would set up problems down the road for that property owner to, you know, build, you know, their principal structures and their accessory structures on that lot because the configuration would really limit them. The definition as it stands now also conflicts with the other provisions of the ordinance, particularly in section 3.7. So our recommendation is to revise that definition for the through and corner lot frontages so that, the intent here is that the minimum frontage requirement would have to be met on both roads. Moving on to 76-4C. The zoning ordinance makes references throughout to commercial driveways and shared commercial driveways, but nowhere is there an actual definition for a commercial driveway or a shared commercial driveway. So the intent of this amendment is to create those definitions so that there's not a term in the ordinance that remains going undefined. 76-4D has to do with the township's zoning ordinance standards as they pertain to farms and the keeping of animals and consistency with the Right to Farm Act. As I discussed at the January 9 meeting, the Right to Farm Act and the GAMS, the generally accepted agricultural management practices that go along with the Right to Farm Act are constantly being revised and amended and challenged in court. And there's consistently new case law that sets precedent as it pertains to the Right to Farm Act. And the point being, it would be impossible to draft a zoning ordinance that is consistent with the GAMS that go along with the Right to Farm Act because those GAMS are constantly being changed. So the amendment that we're proposing is intended to say, these are Heartland Township standards as they pertain to farms and keeping of animals unless otherwise superseded by the Right to Farm Act. And that way, as the Right to Farm Act evolves and the GAMS change, this gives us the flexibility to move along with those changes and those precedents that are set with the Right to Farm Act as it continues to go through case, court cases. 76-4E has to do with some duplicative language. There's some language that exists in the parking section of our ordinance that says, if your site plan gets approved and then you've already started construction, you being the applicant, and then the township changes their parking standards, you do not have to then meet those new standards. You meet the standards as they existed at the time of your approval. And the fact that that language exists in the parking section, but essentially is also addressed in chapter seven of the zoning ordinance is duplicative. And chapter seven is the section where it really belongs. And that same rationale wouldn't just apply to parking, it would apply to a number of things that could potentially change. If your site plan gets approved and then the township changes, say, the building materials requirements and requires you to have more brick than what got approved originally, for example. Just like with the parking standards, the township couldn't then go back and say, well, now we've changed the ordinance and now you have to add more brick. So the fact that it exists now in the parking section begs the question, well, why don't you have that same language in your building materials sections and your landscaping sections and your lighting sections? And since it's already adequately covered within chapter seven, we just wanted to take it out of the parking section entirely and just leave the language already existing in chapter seven as is. 76-4F is again a clarity issue, making it more clear to where, if you're required as a condition of site plan approval to build a sidewalk and/or a pathway, where that pathway needs to be located relative to the public right of way. 76-4G, again deals with duplicative language and the fact that there, within our, chapter five as it pertains to noise regulations, there's a whole section dealing with how you would appeal to those noise regulations. And there's already an entire section within chapter seven that deals with appeals of any type, including noise. So it makes sense to not include those appeal options within chapter five and keep them within chapter seven where they belong. 76-4H is comparable to the one before it, which is, again, duplicative language, the same language existing in two chapters, in this case, again, chapter five and chapter seven. And in this instance, the duplicative language that exists in chapter seven should really remain on its own in chapter five. It pertains to performance standards for pre-existing extraction operations. And since it has to do with performance standards, chapter five is where that's covered and that's where we propose that it stay and not be duplicated again in chapter seven for the sake of clarity. Any questions on those before we get to the last one? I think the last one is where I expect there to be some discussion. Or do you, would you rather just me cover all of these and then we'll have discussion?
Right, because comments back on the very first one.
Thank you. So, letter I has to do with, the intent here is for site plan approval for a principal permitted use. For example, if an applicant wanted to build a retail building in the general commercial district, which is a principal permitted use. As the ordinance is written now, the site plan would come to the Planning Commission for a recommendation for approval. Assuming the Planning Commission were to give that recommendation for approval, the site plan then goes to the Township Board for final approval. We just went through that process with Taco Bell, for example. The intent of this ordinance is to shift that approval authority for site plans for principal permitted uses from the Township Board to the Planning Commission. So if it is a site plan for principal permitted use, if this ordinance were to be adopted or this amendment were to be adopted, the final approval would rest with the Planning Commission and the applicant would not have to take that extra step to the Township Board. As the ordinance is written currently, or the, pardon me, as the amendment is written currently, the decision of the Planning Commission would be final. So if the applicant did not get the decision that he or she wanted, there wouldn't be an appeal option other than to appeal it to Circuit Court. The Township Board had some good discussion about that on Tuesday night and when we get into the, our discussion, we can certainly address that. But the ordinance, the amendment as it's written today would keep that final approval authority with the Planning Commission without any option for an appeal. Happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Okay. Why don't we, we don't have any public, so we don't have any public comment. We'll just go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:17. Why don't we, just for the sake of keeping it orderly, we'll just hit them one at a time. Again, if anybody's got any questions for Dave or a conversation for the group here and take a look at what we have. So why don't we take a look at number, or A. We'll go by the letters. 76-4A. Is there any comments, questions for Dave or one another?
So in the definition of street, we talked two weeks ago about removing the word "other" from number three. It's still there. And I just wondered, is there, did you look, think about it and feel that it shouldn't come out? Or is it just something?
I regret to say that's an oversight. I know we had some other typos and just some language things in there. I think we got the other ones, but
Yeah, it looked like to me you got
Somehow missed that one.
Okay, anything else on A?
Just a quick
Sure.
A little wordsmithing here. Item 134, the second line, isn't it, should read "right of way"? That "rights of way"? Second line.
After public road?
Yeah, after public road. It says "rights of way", isn't it? Singular.
I'm reading just to make sure. I would think, because we're saying two or more intersecting, that two or more makes it plural, in which case I think it would be "right subway".
Okay.
Or then it would have, if it wasn't that, it would need to be "rights of ways".
Well, and I'm thinking elsewhere in the ordinance, probably "rights of way",
I'll, so that, just, that's how it's written today. Let me look at that and compare how we do it elsewhere for the sake of consistency, whether it's "rights of way" or "right of ways", just make it consistent.
The second comment I had is on the second page, item 241. When I was reading the new definition and read the words, "any the particular way", that confused me and I was going to ask the question, would it be possible to pick another word rather than "way"? "Purier way"? Possibly like the "pure route"? I thought "way" was confusing. What does "pure way" mean? Just a comment.
Is that a word you picked up from the county definition? Maybe?
I, uh
How about roadway?
I'd be okay with that.
Like? Does it sound better? Make it roadway instead of just "way"?
Yes, that would be fine.
If you look at number one, it already uses, in existence, state or county local roadway, so
Yes, yeah, I like that.
I think that's
Where are you citing?
241.
I saw, oh, the second part. Where Davis
If you got numbers one, two, and three, number one is, is an existing state, county, or local roadway, so
In that same paragraph.
I think there's a consistency there.
Okay, anything else on A? How about B? Going, gone. How about C? Go ahead. You're good.
My apologies for not being present in the previous meetings. Could somebody quickly explain why we want to go back to having, calling frontage on both roads that side the property? I didn't understand, as I read it several times, why that would be an advantage to go back to having frontage on both of those roads.
Well, I'd almost, I feel better if I could draw it, but if you could picture a corner lot which has frontage on both perpendicular streets, but only needs to meet the minimum lot frontage on one of those two. So let's say the minimum lot frontage is 200 feet. So it meets that frontage on one street, but on the others, the opposite leg, the other corner, it only, it doesn't need to meet minimum lot frontage, so let's say they make it, I don't know, 75 feet. So now you've got kind of a, you still have to meet the width-to-depth requirements of the Land Division Act, so maybe my math doesn't quite work there. But regardless, if you had a lot that is only 200 feet on one side and 100 feet on the other, but still has to meet the front setback requirements on both, now you're really pushing everything back toward the back corner of that lot. You really are limiting the amount of space that the owner of that property has to build. And this wouldn't apply to existing lots that already exist in our township today. It would be if someone were to come in to do a private road or a new subdivision or a land division and wanted to only meet the lot with requirements on one of the two roads. We, if we were to make this change here tonight, we wouldn't allow that because we would say you have to meet the minimum lot with requirements on both of the roads.
Okay.
And in addition to that, it is consistent with language that already exists within section 3.7, which says that lots which have more than one have to provide the required front yards on both sides. I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay. C. Comments on C? How about D? How about E? Comments on E?
You should just ask
That's fine. I was just going to say, from somebody being in E and then coming back later to E. We're almost there now. You're going to have to go with it. We're on F. We only got to get to I. Nothing on F? G? H? And now we'll turn I over to Dave, so you want to elaborate?
I thought if you told me there's no comments on I, we'd just let it go tonight.
Stop at H. You want to elaborate a little bit more on the I?
Sure. So, I guess, any questions first on what the intent here is as far as the procedural? So, not seeing any. So, the question then from, that got brought up at our last Planning Commission meeting on the 9th, was if an applicant comes to the Planning Commission and gets denied, which we hope doesn't come to that too often, but if, does that applicant have the option to appeal that denial to the Township Board? And my answer at that time was, the way this is written, it does not. It says the decision of the Planning Commission is final. And the question was, well, should they be allowed to appeal to the Township Board? And at that time, my answer was, I don't know that that's necessarily my decision to make. That's a policy decision of the Planning Commission and the Board to agree upon. So, the Board had an opportunity to discuss this at their meeting this past Tuesday. And I wasn't able to attend, but I was able to watch from home via the wonders of the internet. And the discussion of the Board and the consensus of the Board is, yes, they want the applicant. If the applicant is, feels aggrieved by the decision of the Planning Commission, the applicant should have the opportunity to appeal that decision to the Township Board. And if I understood their rationale of the Township Board, it was not so much that the Township Board doesn't trust the decision of the Planning Commission. It's more that if the applicant is going to take that denial and take the township to court, it would serve the township better to have had that extra, that extra step, that extra level of scrutiny, of, you know, the planning department reviewed this site plan and made their recommendation. The Planning Commission reviewed this site plan and made a denial. The applicant had an opportunity to appeal that denial to the Township Board. That denial was upheld by the Township Board. So now you've got essentially three levels of review and scrutiny by staff, by the Planning Commission, and by the Township Board, that if and when it were to get to court, that just puts the township on theoretically even better standing, that it went through that due process and was denied by the Planning Commission and that denial was upheld by the Board. That was the Board's desire to, to this amendment. Now, this amendment as it's written now doesn't reflect that desire of the Board because that was kind of fleshed out just this past Tuesday. Which kind of leaves the Planning Commission with a question of, one, does the Planning Commission agree with the Board's rationale with that? And if they do, then we can talk about procedurally what we can do tonight to, how we proceed with revising this particular amendment to reflect what the Board wants to achieve with that. I hope I explained that adequately. So any questions up to that point, I guess, or comments? There, I don't want to put words in the Board's mouth necessarily, but is that kind of where the Board stands, would you say?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. And also their understanding that they're the body that is answerable to the people as well. This commission is all appointed. The Board is actually answerable to the public. Feels that they should have that oversight if needed.
I believe I was the one that brought up the comment on the 9th. How about looking at an option for them to appeal using the Board as opposed to court? So I definitely support it, of course. And then there was a return, kind of, feedback on that, that there was some concern about some redundancy that wasn't necessary. In other words, the Board's been pretty good about supporting our decision. So it's just kind of automatic, the applicant's taking the time to go to the Board and they're going to get the same answer. However, I think if the applicant understands that, he'll think twice about making that extra move, unless he's really prepared to do that. So I don't think, and he'd be more willing probably to accommodate the Planning Commission's recommendations so that he gets it passed the first time, satisfies the Commission and the township the first time through, instead of trying to use any appeal process. So I think just adding, in a simple, just adding the appeal process and having the Board go through it or giving the opportunity to go to the Board to appeal it should be fine.
I'm fine with that.
I agree. I thought it was a great idea, great suggestion. I think it, you know, if anybody was appealing to the courts, it shows uniformity across the Board. I mean, everybody is in agreement, so there wouldn't be any conflict of, we didn't have our opportunity to say because it's the Planning Commission's decision, so. I think it's a good process.
So, if there is, I see a lot of nodding heads. So I'll say if there is agreement on that, then the question So I'll say, if there is agreement on that, then the question is, what options does the planning commission have with the amendments before them this evening? And as I see it, there's two ways we can do this. One would be, the planning department and the township attorney need to put our heads together about revising this amendment, and doing so in a way that the attorney is comfortable with, that if we get to this point where we're getting to appeals and anticipation of litigation, I mean, obviously I want the attorney to tell us that we're drafting something that's gonna protect us if we ever get to what I think would be a worst-case scenario. So we need some time to do that. So I guess the question for the planning commission is, would you want to see that language come back to this planning commission before you take any action on these amendments? Or, if you trust the intent and what we're trying to do, and if you trust that the planning department and the township attorney can come up with adequate language to reach, to satisfy the intent that we're going for, and if you trust that the township board, who ultimately is gonna adopt these amendments, will be comfortable with the language that the attorney and the planning department come up with, then you would have the option of taking action tonight, and that action conceivably would be recommendation of approval of this amendment package, on the condition that this particular Amendment 76-4I is addressed to the satisfaction of the township attorney, something to that effect. And I don't know that I have a strong recommendation either way on that, I could see the benefits of either one of those approaches.
I don't have one.
I certainly don't want to hold this process up any longer, but these ordinances have been looked at and reviewed and satisfied by the commission, so I hate to hold them up. I'd like to get it, we're so close to having it forwarded to the next step, that we want to hold it up for one ordinance. And I would think that just simple term, adding a simple phrase of including an appeal process, shouldn't be that difficult to get through the attorney, and I don't want to have them all held up waiting on the attorney either, because we've seen how that goes So, I don't want to add months to the process just for that one phrase, so if we could do something tonight to add a phrase that seems simple enough, and was still satisfy the township board and the attorney, that's the approach I'd like to take.
I would agree with that. I mean, I did kind of look at it, if the attorney comes up with wording to fulfill what we've all discussed here, are any of us here qualified to tell the attorney, "Your wording is incorrect," that we don't like this?
But we don't really need, I mean, we're just looking for the applicant to have an opportunity to appeal it. How that's done, we don't really care, in accordance, do we?
Well, I was gonna raise that as a question. What happens if the board were to reverse the planning commission's position?
Then it's approved. They approve whatever we do anyways. We can send a recommendation for approval, and they can deny it. So if we deny it, all they're saying is that they can approve it.
Well, the board could uphold the denial, the board could overturn it, approve it, they could send it back, they could approve it with conditions, they would have some options.
Yeah, they could send it back to us and say, "You guys work it out," whatever the disagreement is. I think it's probably two sentences.
Well, it's never two sentences.
Well, there's something I read in here when I was in the ordinance the other day, and it said, you know, something may be appealed, can be appealed to the ZBA, it was that simple.
That's all I'm looking for.
So, we can, I would agree, and I would agree with everybody's comments. We're not lawyers, we're not gonna, if Mike O'Meara says that this is the paragraph or the sentence that's going in, nobody up here is gonna challenge that, because the direction is so very clear. They don't like it, they get denied, they can go to the board for an appeal. He can put it in as many words as he wants, but we're not gonna change it.
What's likely gonna happen is, myself and my staff will take a first stab at it, give it to him, say, "Yeah or no."
Right.
So, if you were to take that approach, and one of the benefits of doing it that way is conceivably, we could still, because we do, these amendment packets still has to get to Livingston County Planning Commission for their review. That group meets once a month, we were hoping to get this to them for their February meeting, which is, I believe, February 19th. So one of the benefits of doing it this way would be, I think we could still stay on that schedule, and then get it to our township board, our first March meeting, and stay on track.
So we'll just give you a motion addressing that. I'm not hearing anybody say they don't support that. Along with the couple minor adjustments, we had 76-4A, Draft 241.
May I ask one question?
Oh, please ask away, absolutely.
You're gonna ask me to go?
No, no, not at all.
Maybe. I have a question on this particular one, 9A. In regards to the zoning administrator may grant an extension of two additional calendar years, and my question is, the very last line, it says, "The zoning administrator shall have the authority to take any request for an extension to the planning commission." Now, I'm reading that to say, "The zoning administrator must have the authority," shall, should be must, right? No? So my question is, does he, is he required to review it with the planning commission, or can he make that decision on his own? So...
Without any input?
Let me, it's a good question, let me just read it one more time. I haven't read this particular provision in anticipation of that question.
It's real, it says, "The zoning administrator may grant up to," he may grant, he in this case, Dave, whoever the zoning administrator, may grant up to it. "They shall have the authority to take it to the planning commission if they want to." Maybe they're not sure.
But that's the way I read it, and my question is, is that the way it's intended?
Well, that's not...
I agree with you, that's the way I read it. He doesn't have to, he could make that decision on his own.
But if there's some uncertainty, or if I want that extra, you know, the scrutiny that this body can provide, then I would have, you know, I have the authority to tell the applicant, yes, I could grant an extension, but in this case, I want to take it to the planning commission, and based on this language, I have that authority.
Because the only change is the red ink right now.
Correct.
Did you get the answer or no?
Well, yes, I got the answer, as I say.
Is it the wording?
I don't agree with it, but...
You don't think?
I don't think, in my perspective, that the zoning administrator should make that decision without first reviewing it with the planning commission. Doesn't, I'm not advocating that the planning commission should approve it, but they should be aware of it before that decision is made.
That's a whole other matter for...
I understand, and I understand that it's been there, and I didn't recognize it before until we started doing some changes to it, and I rewrote it several times, and I said, "Wow." But I could live...
I mean, it wasn't always there. When the economy slowed down, we changed this one. It used to be that there was only a 12-month extension that was possible, and we changed this, knowing that things were slowing down, that people might not act on site plans as quickly, and quite often, before they even realized they were expiring, they were expired, so it kind of just gave a little bit more time. I remember the discussion was, you know, now that this is a longer period of time, there's a chance that ordinances could change, they need to be then evaluated for that, and that's why they may take them to the planning commission, came in as my recollection, because it used to be that the planning commission wouldn't have seen an extension at all. So this gave the ability for the planning staff to then, because we're extending the period of time that it's a valid site plan, that it could come to the planning commission to discuss some of those things that may have impacts on zoning ordinances that have changed.
Yeah, the only reason I made mention of it was, a situation occurred when I was on the Melford Township Board, and the public became quite frustrated with the board, because you're looking at four years, you know, approximately, that you're extending. And they felt that that was quite a length of time to have approval, and when the public came in and asked, "Well, what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen," you know, type of thing, the answers were, "Well, they received an extension." You know, and they wondered, "How long do these extensions go?" you know, type of thing. And there's no formal public review of it, or even review with the board members, you know, that was occurred, and when asked on the street, you go, "I wasn't aware of that." You know, so you yourself were going back and asking, so that was why I asked. I just felt that, and I understand that, that would be a change, but...
I would have to, yeah, I agree with Larry, that would be a change, we'd take up that another day or have a conversation. If it's, I'm sorry, I don't want to get too deep into it, because you could get into some real philosophical thoughts on if a development was good on that corner today, is it kind of a thing? Because if they built it, it would still go there.
Sure.
And the economy is what drove a lot of the things that occurred here, that really made it a little more workable, and I'll call it fair, to the property owners that are going through that process. We're fortunate, Dave comes with committee reports every other week to us, and if he had granted an extension on a site plan, my guess is, hearing what he's telling us, he's probably gonna bring that up.
And that's exactly what I was just gonna say, was, if it's any, if it makes you feel any better, I will make every conscious effort to, you know, when the day comes I grant a site plan extension, it will be part of my planners' report at the, even at the meeting prior to that extension, if possible. Just if nothing else, to keep you aware of it, because you bring up a good point, I mean, awareness is the key, so that'll be my commitment to you, is that won't go unreported.
And that would be perfectly fine with me, I mean, that was a piece that was missing on the previous board, as I said, we weren't even aware that an extension had been made, so we were caught off-guard.
Right.
So, that would be fine. I don't have a problem. Just wanted to raise a question.
Hey, we can do that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions on I or A through I? Anything on this whole packet?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
I think we might be ready to entertain a motion?
Okay, I'll try. Is it okay? To make the motion to recommend the adoption of zoning ordinance amendments number 76-4A through I, except that I will be adjusted to handle the language we just discussed with the attorney. He'll rewrite, talking about the appeal process, so I will be modified. Application number 356, as contained in the attachments. Is that good enough?
And then we also want them to change the term in 76-4A, Paragraph 241, from "any vehicular way" to "any roadway," vehicular roadway, and remove the word "other," right?
Right.
So was that a...
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So we have a motion to recommend approval of zoning ordinance amendment, application number 356 from Commissioner Grissom, and a second from Commissioner Hopkins. Are there any questions on the motion itself and the changes we just talked about? Okay, everybody's familiar? Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both name motion carries. Okay, next up, Item A, annual review of our commission bylaws. As it says, it's an annual review. Dave, did you have anything you'd like to pipe in on this?
I did not, other than to point out what's, something that's relatively obvious, that we went through this process February 14th of last year, there were some minor amendments at that time. Those, the planning commission made a motion to approve the bylaws, subject to those changes being made. Those changes are now reflected in the version that you have before you this evening, and if there are any changes to be made tonight, we as a staff can do so. It is a requirement for the zoning enabling act that these bylaws exist, and that they get reviewed annually, and the purpose of tonight is to meet that requirement.
I don't, I just have a question. Prepare a capital improvements plan, is something that, you know, we'll perform, have we done that, or?
No, I don't. Go ahead.
We did, the last one that we formally went through was 2005?
Okay.
And people all submitted projects that were given to various groups, the planning commission, the board, to rank the projects.
Sure.
That's the last time we did it, actually as part of the strategic plan that the board just adopted at its first meeting in January. It proposes a revamping of the capital improvement plan process, so I would think that you'll be seeing more of that in the very near future, I think. The plan to formulate a process, or formalize a process is April timeframe, so...
Okay.
But it's traditionally a duty of the planning commission to be involved in that.
Okay.
And then, that was gonna be part of my planners' report, of the things that the planning commission is gonna work on in 2014, one of them is the capital improvement plan in the process, as Larry mentioned.
I had one question. It hasn't been in the past either, but it just, as I'm reading through it, I was thinking of it. And they're pretty detailed on job description, basically, including the duties of the township planner. I didn't remember seeing anything in here about whose responsibility it was to make sure that the hearing, public hearing announcements are taken care of, is that something we, I know it's Daze, but it doesn't state that here. Do we need to add that or not? Or does the zoning enabling act take care of it for us? I know it's a requirement through the zoning enabling act.
It is, and I, without my zoning enabling act in front of me, I don't know that it's specific as to who representing the municipality is required to submit the notice and all that. I mean, again, you're correct that our department, whether it's a requirement reflected here in the zoning enabling act, we do it.
I know it gets done, so I'm not too concerned about it, it was just a question, as I was reading through here, I didn't see it.
Traditionally, it is a staff responsibility, if there's a staff to do it.
Yeah, assistant from other professionals. It's not a big deal, it's done.
Well, let's cover it here and direct them to do it under seven. Planning commission assistance, duties of the township planner, the last dot, perform other duties as directed by the planning commission. So Dave, would you make sure that you guys do the vote?
Yep, I'll start making sure that you guys do. Yep, I'll start making sure that the public hearings get properly noticed.
No more money involved, though.
Yep.
There's no raise.
Ask for my raise on Monday.
Any other thoughts or comments on these? If not, we just need a motion to renew them.
Make a motion to recommend the rules and procedure bylaws for 2014, including the addition of, under paragraph seven, the responsibilities added to the duties of the planning, correct, or duties of the township planner, sorry, to include public hearing announcements. Am I missing something?
We need a second.
No, we just.
Did you, okay, second here, okay. We have a motion to adopt them from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any discussion?
So my only discussion is clarification. I think Larry was basically saying that under the bullet point, perform other duties as directed by the planning commission, directing him to do that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be written in here. And I'm only saying that in the hopes of being able to sign them and.
Be done.
Be done with it, rather than have to see it again or other, needing to review them.
Not add a bullet point.
Just include it in the.
Just, you're directing it right now, I think is what they're saying.
Okay.
Good with that?
I'm good with it.
All right, so, we have a motion to recommend approval of the planning commission bylaws from, recommend adoption of the planning commission bylaws as presented from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a motion carries. Thank you. We'll get there. No public, so we'll move past nine and to item 10, planners' report.
Thanks again. We are due to have our 2014 goal-setting session, and I'd like to do that in February, if we can pull it together, the, hopefully the first February meeting. Kind of the, perhaps, big-ticket items that are going to be involving some input from the planning commission in the coming year are an update to the comprehensive plan, a parks and recreation master plan, continuing work on the safer roads and pathway plan, which I want to give you an update on where that one stands in a second here. We want to take a look at the signed regulations within the zoning ordinance and look at some options there, and the planning commission's input will be critical to that. And as Larry mentioned, the capital improvement plan is one of the items that we hope to tackle this year. So that's part of what I hope to be the upcoming goal-setting session in February. The, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to pause you there while we're on that topic. Prior to having that goal session, I want to see a list of those other recommendations from clear zoning, what.
Ordinance.
Right, there was, I think there was 52.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, we did.
Thirty or 31?
Thirty.
We did, we're doing 30 amendments this year. Some of them were recommendations from staff, but they kind of addressed the clear zoning ones, so 30 out of 48 is a fair guess when it all boils down. So, Mr. Hopkins, you want to see that as part of the work session for goal-setting?
Yeah.
The, as I think we've mentioned in the course of our site plan discussion, the Taco Bell did receive final approval from the township board on Tuesday evening, in relatively short order. I had a chance to watch the meeting, and just, the planning commission deserves to hear it, that the applicant said he very much, or the applicant's engineer anyway, said he very much appreciated the work of the township and the planning commission, and the attention to detail, and the diligence, and the fact that some of you took a trip down to Romulus to look at the other Taco Bell, and, you know, they said they just, they don't see that in other communities, that type of dedication, so, you know, it's worth this group hearing that that was very much appreciated. An update on the safer roads and pathways plan that I mentioned. So we had a meeting with the safer roads and pathways task force this past Monday evening, and made some good progress on if the township is going to move forward with the possibility of a millage option for road improvements, what that millage rate and the term of the millage would be. And the task force has kind of zeroed in on the projects that they would want to see included in that safer road and pathways plan, certain paved road projects, gravel road projects, pathways, and then there's a group of other projects that don't fall neatly into any of those categories. They prioritize those, they said, if we had this big of a pool of money, which percentage of that pool would we devote to gravel versus paved versus pathways? Point being, we're really close to having the solid foundation of a plan, and the planning staff is working on that first draft, and our hope is to get that first draft of the safer roads and pathway plan to the task force at their February meeting, so that they can review it. If they approve of it, then that will be the plan that will start getting circulated to the public, for public input, and get it out there, and revise as necessary based on what that public input is. So more to come on that. And that's everything I have on my list to discuss as for the planners' report.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, anything from anyone?
All I have is that I will be absent from February 3rd to the 27th. We're out of state, so I won't be able to make any meetings. Maybe look at them on the web, though.
We are on the web, you can watch us. Anything else? No, we have a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I motion to adjourn.